It's Christmasy.
Yes.
I love that.
I love it.
It's beautiful.
I assume it works.
Mine is, mine is Zappos. That shoe is she, and it's, it's like, Zappos is just yelling at everyone. Hey Doug, thank you.
Good.
Chuck said, you all on this? He said, you all was fantastic. So, use them. Fantastic.
Y'all didn't even tell me to come down here.
He's trying to figure out whether. We have three good video. Hello. Are they good?
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Friday portion of the December State Board of Education meeting. We have a series of reports this morning, and we've got some time to soak them in and ask questions. And then we will move on to, we've got one more work session after this. The, we get to start with the Career Coach and JAG presentation, and I'll turn it over to Ms. McMurray. And we're very glad you're here.
Good morning, Chairman and the Board. I'm Sonya Wright McMurray. I'm Associate Director for Career Technical Education, Special Projects at the Department of Career Education. And want to thank you first for allowing us to have the opportunity to share with you a little bit about our programs that we have at our agency. We were just having a conversation this week about how both of these programs we feel are some of the best kept secrets. Because we keep hearing people say, "We need to do this, we need to do that." And we're like, "Well, we're doing it through these great programs." So I wanted to be able to share a little bit about this today, and then answer any places that you guys may have. So it's my understanding that you did get a chance to see the PowerPoint prior to. So I will quickly go through that. I will not go through every slide, but just kind of hit some highlights. And so there it is. As I mentioned, in the Department of Career Education, CTE has. Is that better?
Um, yeah.
Okay, okay. And plus I speak very fast, so it probably didn't help much.
No, that's okay. I just couldn't hear you speaking.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that'll be even better. So I wanted to highlight the two programs, Arkansas College and Career Coaches Program, and then also the JAG Program. Yeah, perfect. So with the Career Coach Program, as I said, you guys have had a chance to review that. Just wanted to highlight for you that this is a program that we start working with our students in the seventh, eighth grade. Typically, whenever the career orientation, career development class is offered, our career coaches partner with those teachers to provide some additional supports to help enrich that experience. Then we begin to develop the career plan at that point, and then students are supported throughout their high school experience to make sure that the plan that they developed is very organic and grows as they grow, and it makes sense as they progress forward. So I did include a slide there so you could see that we do have a partnership with our two-year colleges. But they serve as the host for these programs. The career coaches are actually employees of the two-year college, and then they go out into the school districts to provide their supports. So this is a program at Arkansas State University Mid-South. These are students that are at West Memphis High School, and they're learning about manufacturing. The great thing that we love about this program is that as we identify some of those areas in the state that are growing and need more of our students to get engaged and excited about going into those careers, we can build that into the program. So students are getting a chance to see what manufacturing looks like today. For many of them, their parents may not be excited about that career field. So when they go home and they talk about it, they can say, "Well, this is what it is, and this is what it looks like." So our service area, we are not in all 75 counties right now. We're in 37 counties, but that is a growth for us. Originally, when the program started, we were just in 21 counties. So we have been able to grow our program to expand outside of that original area. Hopefully, you were able to get a copy of some of the handouts that we have. So one is a very good overview of what our program is and all the programs. The other handout that relates to the Career Coach Program gives you an idea of who those colleges are that we're currently partnering with, and those school districts. This year, we did see growth. We were able to add 7.5 new career coaches, seven new school districts. We were able to add five new counties. We saw our largest growth in Union County. We had quite a bit of our schools there that picked up and wanted to be able to offer the Career Coach Program. And so we kind of had spread out across that entire county, which really excited us. Because we had a college that was in that county, but we did not serve any of the schools. So that did help us to grow in that area. Outside of the Career Coach Program itself, we do have what we call enrichment programs. We offer the Career Exploration Camps. This is an opportunity for students to get engaged in day-long workshops to learn more about careers. This is also an opportunity for school districts to partner with business and industry. So they bring in individuals that are understanding what it is to try to get students excited about going into those careers, and they come onto the college campus and provide an opportunity. These are students that are at ASU Mountain Home, through Carter and Flippin', and they're learning about careers in the health career field. We also offer the Arkansas College Application Campaign. This is something that expands outside of the Career Coach Program. We try to get folks engaged at schools that, whether they have a career coach or not, they're getting their school culture changed and excited about college and the post-school experience. The name is a little bit deceptive. This is a national program, so that's why we use that title. But when we talk to our students, we talk to them about anything that relates to post-secondary education in general. So it's not just the two-year, four-year route. It could be a technical certificate. It can be an apprenticeship program. Whatever it is that gets that student to their level of success, we work with them there. Our funding stream now is diversified, but when we first started the program, we were 100% funded by TANA. That was how we got the program piloted, and that's how we chose our original county. So we were in 21 counties that had the highest poverty rates. We felt like that if we could show success and growth there, then definitely we could expand the program outside of those counties and also have some success. Today, we have a partnership with our school districts. They put in funds. Our agency still supports the program through our Office of Skills Development, also our public school funds. And then we also receive a grant from the Department of Workforce Services. The Department of Workforce Services provides funding for our Career Exploration Camp, and that helps them to be able to meet that need, as explained in the OLA, of being able to reach out to those youth and get them excited and get them prepared for careers. So this is what we were able to do in our first 12 months. And when we looked at that first year of our program, that's when the lottery scholarship was really rolled out, and we saw a large growth in students that were applying for financial aid. But when we did a deeper dive and dug into the data, we were able to identify that those programs that had a career coach saw a higher rate of increase of students that were applying those financial aid applications over those that did not have a career coach. So we were able to see from that, just having that additional person there in the environment, in the school, talking to students, getting them engaged and excited, was able to show a larger growth during that time period. We also saw the University of Arkansas Community College at Hope that prior to, we did not see a lot of our Hispanic students getting engaged in post-secondary education. We do also have an individual on staff that works specifically with our ELL students and helping them to prepare for the process as well. And this individual did drive from Little Rock to Hope on a bi-monthly basis to work with those career coaches to help to build that capacity. So before the program was in that area, they only had about two students that were engaged in going onto the campus and enrolling. That enrollment went up to 10 after a first year. And then when we were looking at concurrent enrollment, they had not had any students that were from the Hispanic population that were enrolling in that program, and after a year, we saw four. So I know four is a small number, but it's bigger than that zero that was sitting there before. So we were really excited about that. One of those students that we wanted to highlight was Edna Martinez. She did graduate from Prescott High School. She went on to UACC Hope and graduated. She was also recognized as an All-Star by the Two-Year College Association. And after she left there, she went on to University of Arkansas Fayetteville to pursue her nursing degree. So very excited about that experience and a good outcome for her. So our measures up until about 2015 were based off of what was originally put into our original language of the grant. Spoke to college-going ACT scores, remediation rates, and applications for financial aid. We were able to meet all of our goals. We set a goal of about 5% over the course of the time at the end of our pilot period. We actually saw that we were able to increase that even greater. So the increase we saw was 22.16% for the college-going rate during that time period, and that was higher than the state average. As we look at the ACT score and remediation rate and application for financial aid, we saw that we were able to exceed our goals there as well. Again, we believe that the presence of the career coach, the interaction of the career coach, the follow-up that was provided there, and also within the community and with the parents, is what we saw with that growth. The students that I have highlighted here were at, went to Ozarka. They went to Mountain View High School. They were excited about going into the career field of welding. Tulsa Welding School was a very aggressive and very motivated recruiter for a lot of our students. And so they were excited about going to Tulsa Welding. Only challenge is, is that they had no family in Tulsa. They had no jobs in Tulsa. They had no place to stay in Tulsa. But those three young men thought it was a great idea to go to Tulsa. Until their career coach sat them down and said, "Did you know there was a great program right down the road at Heber Springs?" And they went on a visit there. They took the teacher on the visit there, and those students enrolled in that program. So again, helping students to see what is really here in our state that can help them be successful, and helping them to be successful. Because we all know, now that we can see forward far more than our students can a lot of times, if you don't have any support in where you're going, you're not going to be very successful. We have modified our performance measures going forward now. We try to align those more with Perkins. I will say that we probably will be modifying those again now that Perkins has been reauthorized, and we're looking at the language there. We want to make sure that what we're doing in the Career Coach Program is aligned with what we're doing within our division and growing properly along with that also. So we have been able to serve as a model for other programs. University of Arkansas created a Raiser Coach Program back in 2011, based on the results and the methods and work that we had done. That was founded by the Walton Foundation. The state of Alabama started a Career Coach Initiative in 2012. It was funded by their Governor's Office on Workforce Development. Also modeled up what we were doing here in the state of Arkansas. State of North Carolina started North Carolina Works. If any of you were around for previous, this program used to be called Arkansas Works. And so after North Carolina worked with us a little bit and got their program started, they're out there. North Carolina Works, and we changed our name, so. Then the Department of Education in Georgia wanted to do a review of all the career coach programs around the state to get an idea of how to build there. So the University of Georgia School of Public International Affairs contacted our office. We worked with them, and they put together some pieces to help to advise them on how to develop their Career Coach Program. So not only what we're doing is impacting our folks here in the state of Arkansas, but we are becoming a model of what is being done around this country. And we are very excited about that. So that's the Career Coach. Do you want me to keep going, or you have any questions about the Career Coach Program?
Why don't we, why don't we stop there and see if you can, folks have any questions on Career Coach Program?
I have a question. I just have a comment. We, we have the Career Coach Model at the school that I taught at, and it was just a great resource for students and teachers. Because sometimes counselors, you think, "Well, that's the job of a counselor." They get so overwhelmed by the other things that we ask them to do that sometimes this isn't on their front burner. And so this has just been a valuable resource for kids. I can't tell you how life-changing it is for some, for some students. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And that does remind me that we look at career coaches being assigned to a school based on the enrollment 9 through 12. So we, if a student has, if a school has an enrollment of 500 students, then they get at least one career coach for every 500 students. We thought that helps to bring that ratio down, along with the school counselor closer to the national recommendation of 250. So that is also the other goal, is to try to help support those school counselors. Because we know, it's not that they don't want to do the work, but the time is just not there. Thank you.
Is it, in terms of the funding streams, is it an explicit match in a, between funding that comes from career ed and funding that comes from the district? Or is it more, is it prorated based on the poverty level within the district? What, I mean, what determines, does this 52-45 ratio of funding, is that pretty consistent across the schools where, where this work is taking place? Or does it vary a great deal? And that's just kind of the cumulative data?
So, Sonya, I think I get your question. So there are, there are a few factors that go into determining what amount the school is going to contribute, and then what we're going to contribute. At the very base, we ask that a school be willing to put in half of the salary and benefits. We match the other half of salary and benefits. And then the college that is responsible for hosting the program, they provide a full-time person that is responsible for help to supervise that position. And then they also provide all the M and O costs. So that's the three-legged part there. When it comes down to what the school district provides for the, for the salary, we allow the college to help provide that guidance. They have the ability to say, "On our campus, this type of position would get this salary." And so then they share that with us, and then we determine from there where the half. Now, if a school district is on their own and they're funding it, say if the position is 51.5 for salary and benefits, because we do allow them to comb in those line items, then they would be responsible for the 25.750 other half. But if a school district is a smaller district, and they want to partner with another school district, then they then prorate out those amounts so that it meets that the larger school would pay a little bit more, smaller school would pay a little less. And with that, then they would get more days because they're larger, and the other school would get less days because they're smaller. So we kind of look at all of those pieces. There are some schools that, so I guess, for example, UACC-B, they wanted to pay their position a little higher. And so they were able to negotiate that with the school district, that can we go to this higher rate? And the school district was so engaged and so excited about the program, they were willing to make up the difference that we weren't able to do.
And in terms of the, in terms of the map, how much of the, the counties where there is not, not activity for this program, how much of that is about school districts inability to, to, to fund? Is it, are you, is your sense that there's a great deal of desire to be engaged in this program that can't be met because districts simply don't have, feel that they don't have the funds to, to put into the program?
Again, that's another one of those, a combination of that. There are some districts that we have worked with in the past that, as time progressed on, they just weren't able to continue to fund at that amount. We do try to work with them to kind of see, well, is there another partner you can pull in to help bring down your cost? And sometimes it's just something they're not able to do based on, maybe they're going into fiscal distress, or they have other priorities that have taken place at that point. Then some of the gap is from the schools that just haven't bought into the program as the modelist is designed. Because these are not employees of the school district. They are employees of the two-year college. And so we have very strict guidelines and rules and policies on what career coaches can and cannot do. And so that does sometime lend into who is willing to participate and who is not willing not to.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on this, this part of the program?
Are you all a part of the group that partners with Be Pro, Be Proud?
On a lot of things we do. A lot of things we do. Our career coaches bring up the track.
So your career people do know about that and can get it scheduled if, if you feel like it would add value to help the students actually do, rather than just hear about something?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you. It's good to see you today. How closely are the coaches working with the school counselors? And in schools where you don't have coaches, are y'all providing any sort of supplemental training to those school counselors on this model?
Sure. So they work very closely with the school counselors. Part of their process that they have to include, and this is a competitive grant application. So as part of their application, they have to give us an outline of how that's going to look in structure. So they do have to have regular meetings with them. Before school starts, we say, "You need to sit down, talk to your school counselor, figure out what their plan is for the year." So that you can be a part of that, and you guys are not bumping heads, trying to offer things at the same time. Then throughout the year, they continually have meetings, either them, and then also their supervisor. Those are required parts of the program. In some of the schools that we have, the career coach's office is inside of the school counselor's office as well. So they have that very close relationship and build. I know we had a time before we were able to present to the legislature, and the school counselor at that time that was working with us drove all the way down from Jasper to be able to testify on how much he loved his career coach. So the relationship is very strong there. We do provide trainings that our career coaches have, but we also open that up to school counselors, to other career development officials in the school. A lot of that is done through webinars, and so we do provide opportunities to where they can get the same information as our career coaches and be able to also utilize that. We are part of their listserv, so as we send out things, we participate as well. Arkansas College Application Campaign is a great example of how school counselors that were not a part of the Career Coach Program were able to be a part of that program and go through the training, receive all the tools and resources that our office developed to provide with their students as well. So even though they may not have the career coach, they had the ability to have some of those pieces to help support their students.
That makes sense. I think we, I've discussed this before, but there is a fear that because they're housed at the two-year college, they're just representing that one college. How do y'all prevent that so that those career coaches aren't just, you know, shepherding the students into that one school?
Sure. And that's one of our strict guidelines and policies and rules that we have. We even have it in writing. So if they can say, "Well, I didn't know." Well, go to page two, you'll see it. But we are very clear that career coaches are supposed to be a recruiter for post-secondary education and training in general, wherever that may be. So that may be your two-year college, that may be a four-year college, that is not even in your area. But we frown very highly on any student that feels like that they're being pressured to go to one school over the other just because they're working with that career coach. And our career coaches do a wonderful job with that, with making sure that that does not happen.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you search out, like in the southeast or the south, or whatever we call it ourselves in Arkansas, to find out where the better or the best programs are? Or do you just counsel toward Arkansas schools?
I will say that at this point, that we have our stronger focus on what's happening in Arkansas because, you know, we're wanting to kind of grow our own and keep our own. But our, again, our career coaches, because they are on very two-year college campuses, and they are connected with various four-year college campuses, we do provide them opportunities when they come to their statewide training to share what they're working on and what they're doing. But again, if a student has an interest in, if those students would have had a better plan for going to Tulsa Welding, that would have really made sense for them, then they would have supported them to go to Tulsa Welding. But we, as a part of their planning process, we always want to make sure that that is the best plan for them. So if a student identifies a program outside of the state that they're excited about going to, that they want to go to, career coaches will sit down with them and work with them to help them understand, "Okay, these are the things you need to put in your plan while you're going through high school" to make sure that that is something that can happen for you outside of.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Carry on.
Okay, so Jobs for Arkansas's Graduates is a part of a national program, which is Jobs for America's Graduates. And this is the JAG model. I'm not going to go through all the squares. But this program is designed to assist our students that are in middle and high school that may have some type of barrier to allow them to graduate on time. And so we provide supports through a curriculum that helps them to work through the processing of learning more about preparing for careers after high school. This program is a class that they are enrolled in. They have what we call a JAG Specialist. This is a certified teacher that is in the school, that is trained to be a specialist, trained on the JAG model, to help them guide through the process. I say we do have middle school programs. We have a phenomenal middle school program in Hot Springs. So if you're around that area and get a chance to visit, they're doing some awesome things there. We had some middle school students that came to a state meeting, and we thought they were high school kids. They were so mature, so that they're doing a great job there. But as students go through their program, many times this program gets confused with a work release program. And that, let's say, I say work release, a work-based learning program. Work release is another connotation. But a work-based learning program, and that's all it is. And that's not all that it is. That is a part of the program, but the curriculum and the support that the JAG Specialist provides, there's also community services attached to this as well. There is an opportunity for students to be engaged in leadership through this, and also to compete in different competitions, to get awards, to go on field trips. So there is a lot that comes along with this. But the work-based learning component is a piece, and the JAG Specialist is responsible for assisting the students through that process, going out and talking to their employers to learn how they're doing, providing that feedback back to students so they can know how to improve on their jobs. So we're not only talking to students about how to obtain employment, but how to maintain it once you go on. And all those pieces along the way that leads to whatever career they may want to be interested in going forward. We do have a state JAG Advisory Board. This is new for our state. We just developed this within the past couple of months. But members on our board are NTG Arkansas, Tyson, AT&amp;T, McDonald's, and Arkansas State Chamber. Governor Hutchinson is a member of the National JAG Board. JAG is very proud of the fact that they are one of the few boards in the nation that is related to such type of work, that has a large representation of governors that are bipartisan. And so that really allows them to have great support, to connect in ways that they would not be able to without being able to have that interaction. So our service area, we're in 105 school districts. We have 125 programs. The 125 programs makes us the third-largest program in the national network. We are only behind Indiana and Louisiana. So that's something that we're very proud of. Um, but also being the third largest program in the nation, we are one of the most cost-effective programs in the nation as well. Um, some of our, uh, colleagues in, that are a part of this network, they see their costs, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand dollars per student. We're at about two hundred and eighty dollars per student. We're able to do that because we partner really well with the school districts. They provide the JAG specialist, so we don't have to pay that salary. We do provide some one-time grants that go out to help students, schools to be able to start a program. And then event, if we have the funds available from our partners, then we do send out some additional funds that help them to reinforce anything they're wanting to do, um, for internships, uh, for field trips. If they're wanting to do any program expansion, we do have funds that allows them to do that. We serve a little under four thousand students. A little over twenty-six hundred of those are the ones that are currently in school and around thirteen sixty of those that are out of school. JAG requires us to do a one-year follow-up with all of our students to see where they are post-graduation. So it's not just important on what students are able to obtain while they're in the program, while they're in high school, but we want to make sure that what is happening with the student is beneficial to them once they leave the high school environment. These are our funding sources. So Department of Workforce Services, um, has given us a grant of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from TANF. This allows us to help start programs in areas that have a higher poverty rate, um, high free, free and reduced lunch rates in the schools. That helps us with that. Um, Entergy provides seventy-five thousand, twenty-five thousand of that is used for state, um, conferences and activities. And then a fifty thousand of that goes out to schools to start new programs. AT&T gave us a grant for fifteen thousand, that was for new programs. And Tyson gives us a five thousand dollar grant, which is also used for state conferences. Oh, and the energy funds are also used to take students to our national competition. So, um, JAG is evaluated on these five measures. These are state by, these are established by the national office. And so in order for us to be seen as a successful program, we try and we have met all five of these measures. So we're looking at the graduation rate, um, those that are in job placement or military service, positive outcomes, full-time jobs and full-time placement. So the number that is in parentheses is what JAG establishes as the minimum standard. And the number that you see outside the parentheses is the number that our state has been able to accomplish. The one that we are very excited about is that ninety-five percent graduation rate. So students that go through our program and complete are graduating on time at ninety-five percent. So keeping in mind, these are students that entered their program with some type of barrier to be able to graduate on time and now they're graduating at ninety-five percent. And then we also are very excited about our positive outcomes. These are students that a full year after completing the program are either in college, working, enrolled somewhere, doing something positive. So we know that the program not only made an impact on them while they were in school, but after they graduated, they still continue to see success. Outside of our state program being recognized as five oh five, we have school districts that also can receive five oh five, which means in looking at their data, that they are able to accomplish the five oh five award as well. So we had thirty-nine programs, these are nineteen of those, and these are the rest of them. So maybe you've seen some of the schools in your area. If you didn't know, tell them congratulations because they're doing an awesome job. We have far more schools that are doing a great job as well, but these are the ones that made the five oh five. So nationally, our program has been recognized. This past summer, we went to the national competition in New Orleans. And our program was recognized for having the second place in the nation for scholarship awards, meaning that our students earned over ten million dollars in scholarships. So those, and those are students that are, again, going on to post-secondary education, were able to find the funds necessary to be able to support that. And we've broken it down there on the amount of funds that they were able to receive. We had three students that were chosen out of twenty across the nation to be Smith Scholars. Those students received thousand-dollar scholarships to go on to post-secondary education. Again, they, we submit their names to the national office, they review their applications, and then they're selected. So statewide impact beyond the career coach program and JAG program, so kind of back to Dr. Moore's question. Um, we do provide trainings and workshops outside of what we do because we, you know, we don't want to be greedy and don't want to share what we have. And we know that we're doing a great job with what we're doing. We want to make sure others are able to do that, even if they're not able to participate in the program. Um, so we do have an annual training on ACT services that we provide through a webinar. We partner with the National ACT Office to provide that. We are partnering with the National Technical Assist Center, National Technical Assistance Center on Transitions Partnership. Um, that is with the Department of Education, Arkansas Transition Service, Rehab Services in our agency. And we're evaluating the transition services that are available to students across the state and identifying best practices and developing professional development for teachers to be able to better support their students in the classroom. And then we also are working on developing trauma-informed care trainings because we know that many of our students come to us with many issues before they even cross the threshold. And for us to be able to really think about truly educating them, we have to think about the whole student and what they may be going through. Um, a couple of things we didn't share in that PowerPoint that I want to make sure that you're aware of this past month because we sent it before we were able to go to the conference. But this past month, we took twenty-four students to the national competition in Washington DC. They competed in the categories of math, employability skills, problem-based learning, and public speaking. And we had a first-place winner, Parkview High School won first place nationally in project-based learning. So we are very excited for them, very excited for that specialist. And I guess it's the time to toot my own horn. Um, but I was also recognized as a national network leadership award for the work that I've been able to do in the state to help with the program. And I think that's what we are really excited about, is that we all work together to make it work. And we are getting recognized nationally for our work.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
I can see why.
Thank you. Okay, so that is all that I have on the JAG program. Are there any questions about that?
Any questions on JAG over here? Any questions over here? All right. Thank you so much for, for taking the time to, to come and spend time with us and, um, great information.
Thank you, thank you. Good opportunity, we appreciate it.
And thanks to everybody, our friends, friends are crucial, this is career and technical, career and technical education. Um, all right, uh, next up is Randy House.
Good morning. So I've mentioned this before, that I've been in thirty-eight schools this year, so far. Um, I'm about to the halfway point of my year, and so I'm very honored that I've been invited into that many schools. And it's very rare to go into a school and immediately just know they get it. They're doing things and they understand that everything they're choosing to do in that school is impacting student learning. So a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to Hillcrest School District. Now, I've never heard of Hillcrest School District before this, even though this district lies not many miles outside my hometown. Um, a high school friend, actually a girl I had grown up my entire life, is the one that invited me to come. She and her husband have a daughter who go to this school. And, um, they are in charge of the backpack program for the students who need extra supplement over the weekend. So she and her husband run this as parent volunteers. And they have an annual food drive kickoff. And so that's why she invited me to come, to see their annual food drive kickoff and to be their guest speaker. Little information about Hillcrest School District. It's a tiny school district. It's a consolidation of Lynn and Strawberry, um, four hundred and twenty schools, K through twelve. And when I went there, we were in an auditorium where every student was in there and it only took up half of the auditorium. So this is Hillcrest Elementary, taken right off of my school info. It's a B school. Um, look at that student-to-teacher ratio, eleven to one. Awesome, right? Seventy-seven percent low income, twelve and a half years average teaching experience, which is kind of high for a school, a rural school. And then Hillcrest High School, C, uh, C school, look at that student-to-teacher ratio. Right? Mm-hmm. Um, so I was greeted with just this absolute warm, could not believe, I mean, I was the president walking in there. And they had a, a really popular country music artist coming, but I felt like I was just as important and the kids were just as excited to see me. So I think that speaks volumes to how much they value education. So these are the students, that's all of them. And they, on this morning, they had the privilege of listening to this young man who's, goes to Arkansas State University, I think. He's from Jonesboro, named Corey Jackson, who was the Arkansas Country Music Award recipient this year. Incredibly talented young man, put on a full concert for them for a sing this morning. And it was, Meg, I invited Megan to come with me. And it wasn't lost on us as we sat there that this is probably the only concert many of these kids will ever get to go to. And what other kids in Arkansas right now are starting their day like this. It was incredible. It was an hour-long concert, kindergarten through twelfth grade, and every kid was completely engaged the entire time. Just another picture of him, he was really impressive. While there, I got to meet, it's kind of hard to tell who's the mom in this picture, it's not me. So the lady in the camo shirt is the mother of the other two ladies. And they all three teach in this school. Um, it's actually the mother is the curriculum coordinator for the elementary school. The, the one in the blue jean shirt is a fourth-grade teacher. And the one on the end is actually their art slash ag teacher at the high school. Yes, she teaches an innovative classroom that molds art and ag together. Her students are building and creating, and it is incredibly impressive what is going on in that classroom. It's unlike anything I've ever seen. Students ran the entire day. These are some of the junior high stu, junior high age students. This is the FBLA group. They were in charge of wrangling us. They were in charge of taking us on tours. They planned the entire event. These students were absolutely in charge of the event and had such buy-in. They were so proud. In that classroom, this was a co-teaching classroom, the lady, um, in the black shirt is a first-year teacher. So this classroom of fourth grade had thirty-five students, was a very large room. And these two ladies taught together for the entire day. So the benefit of this is you had a seasoned teacher and a first-year teacher together all day long. And so while one was teaching language arts, the other one's able to provide interventions in real time. And then the other one teaches math and the same thing goes on. It's just thinking about classrooms and thinking about how we can do things a little bit differently to benefit our students. This school district just does that everywhere you go. This is the kindergarten class. This is where I felt most at home. Look at the number of students in there. I think they said they had about thirteen to fifteen students in the kindergarten classroom. That low number allowed them to do inclusion with special needs students who normally would be pulled out into a self-contained classroom. Those students were in that classroom all day long. It was incredible. This is the principal. While we were there, we were talking in the gym and kindergarten was having PE in the gym. Anybody's ever seen kindergarten PE understands what this looks like. This principal was playing with those students. He was assisting that teacher. He was tying shoelaces. He was engaged with students the entire time we were there. Just speaks volumes about what's important to them. He also does recess duty. Their music teacher is actually an Apple graduate who had gone through the Apple program, non-traditional, which we found as we talked to a lot of the teachers, they were homegrown teachers. We met a lady who was in Chicken Factory, wasn't it? And, uh, had decided to sub and the school district said, you know, we think you should be a teacher and we're going to pay for you to take that process. And so she's been teaching there. And that's why you see families of three teaching there. They, they grow their own. That's why they have stu, teachers with twelve years of experience on average. So the food drive. This is a school that, like we said, seventy-seven percent, um, reduced lunch fee. So this event is a month-long event hosted by these two, this husband-and-wife team who have an entire basement in this dis, in this, in the central office. It's a house. And they partner with the NEA Food Bank and they send home food supplements for the students to last over Christmas break because that's a long time that kids are at home, right? So they engage the students in a spirit of giving so that they end up last year raising, I think, nine thousand items. They had so much donated that they had to give it back to the NEA to help other families in the NEA. This was a part that really got me, though. So as I was touring this, I noticed this shelf of cake mixes and icing and I said, well, what's the birthday shelf? And she said, oh, that was my husband's idea. They know every child's birthday that gets a backpack. And they make sure that that kid gets a cake and icing and they have a birthday party. And that spoke so much to me. They also make sure that when the kids graduate, kindergarten and sixth grade and high school, they get a spaghetti dinner to celebrate. This tiny school in Lawrence County gets it. They understand what it takes. And I'm just so honored to be a part of that and to be able to share that with you today.
Very good.
Thank you. Questions, comments? That's my, everybody cries. Well, it's, actually, I do have a, thank you, Randy, thank you very much. I do have a comment, um, you know, and this is a, uh, change that has come in me since I've been on this board. I obviously came to this board, um, being one of those folks who thought we needed big schools for efficiency's sake. Um, I still think we need larger institutions for efficiency's sake and for opportunities. Yet the, the whole time I've been on this board, I have seen stories like the one that you just told, which, where pretty magical things happen in small, smaller schools in the state. And indeed, um, that could probably only happen in, in schools of this size. And that's been a, it's, it's been a, it's been something I've had to think about in a new, in a new way. Because I was, I was very much in, and, and I think there are ways to probably maximize the benefits of both in terms of some administrative consolidation, but trying to keep as much, uh, smallness as possible. Um, but, um, I don't have any, I don't really have any grand question or grand comment. Although I would, I would love for other people to, to, uh, to share their perspectives. But it's been something that has changed in me over, over seven years as I've heard stories like yours, not quite as effectively told as you. Uh, but, uh, but stories, um, stories like yours.
You know, speaking to that, Dr. Bar, I think one thing that you find from those rule and, and what I missed just from growing up, the community engagement piece, you don't have to solicit for it. It's there. And what she's talking about, people want to be involved because that's their, I mean, that investment in their kids. And everybody said, you move to the urban, to the bigger areas, everybody's so busy. But that's, that's the main thing, the main thing in the communities and they're involved. And I take that just from Friday night football in, in small communities. That's a big event that everybody sees everybody. And, you know, and talk about the next week, shut down the stores, everybody, everybody's there. And so that community engagement and those rural communities is something that I think we all desire, you know, for what you're saying.
I think something, Dr. Bar, that's there that, that sometimes it's harder to do in a, in a larger district. Those are all our kids because we know each and every one. We know their parents. I know their grandparents. I know their brothers, their sisters. And they are my kids. And I, you know, you love them and you, you care about them. And I know you do that in a, in a larger district, it may be with your, your particular classroom. But, uh, in a smaller district, it's not just my classroom, it's everybody, the whole, you know, the whole, all of us. And we're all in this together and, and there is a sense of relationship. There is a sense of togetherness that, you know, sometimes when you get larger, it's harder to do it. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, um, next up. Computer's dead. Um, Dr. Hernandez is up with the Arkansas River ASC reevaluation.
Good morning. Dr. Mike Hernandez, State Superintendent for Office of Coordinated Support and Service. And so, proudly bring back the reevaluation process for Arkansas River Co-op. If you remember last year, they were, they were one of the three, uh, co-ops that scored a one. Uh, specifically, in, in this case, was around user satisfaction survey results. I believe they had around nine or so responses, uh, last year. This year, it's grown to over eight hundred and twenty responses. And so we're, uh, really thrilled about that. Uh, one of the unique things about the co-op that they did this time that we really appreciated as a committee was that instead of them telling us about the things they were doing, they actually brought multiple stakeholders in. So they brought in teachers that talked about how much they were being supported and being mentored. They talked about business, business community people came in and talked about the partnerships they were forging. Students came in and talked about some of the things that they were able to do because of things they got through the co-op. And so it was really a, a really neat thing for us, because we got to see some of that and hear some of those things that were going on with the co-op. And the main over, overarching theme was just how responsive the director and the staff at the co-op were trying to help that community. And we know in, in a lot of the work we do, when we talk about some of the districts that we're close to working with, um, that's a, an overarching theme that happens a lot, as we see, you know, um, all of our staff, but specifically Ms. Swan and, and Mike Walker, that are always there, uh, being responsive to, to what we need. When we need something, you know, they're right there. Um, she really wanted to be here today. Um, but one of her, our recommendations to her was to continue to build those consortiums within the co-op. So getting the different, uh, districts to buy more, buy in more to the co-op and forge partnerships that will help with some of those efficiencies and things like that. So she's actually had a meeting today with, with several of the, uh, her board members, which are the superintendents, having conversations about how they're working on, uh, building those consortiums and stuff like that. So I, uh, very proudly present to you their evaluation, where they did score fives on, in every category.
That's awesome. And, I mean, this is the way assessment's supposed to work, right? I mean, immediate turnaround to fix the challenges that are there. So I think, but it takes a lot of work. And so thank you so much for, for, because, you know, we know successful co-ops are a big part of our strategy. And, uh, so thank you very, very much. Any questions or comments? Commissioner?
Yes, I, just to re-, reinforce what you said. You know, the, uh, when we first had this, had co-ops that had ones, you know, the, the response that we got was, uh, you know, from some of those co-ops was concerned that we were going to try to make them look bad. That this was an effort to, uh, you know, punish. And, so we tried to explain then, and we explained to you, to you all at that time. And, you know, that, that's not the intent. The intent is to help everybody get better. And low scores don't mean you're bad. Low scores mean you need help or you, you know, you need support. And that's, you know, this is the first, I think, of the re-evaluations. So we'll have two more coming.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that our goal is work with them to get better, indicators, uh, get better. And then let's get better indicators. It's that ongoing, that system of inquiry, uh, that we want to have for all of the operations of, within the education system of the state. So, uh, thank you, Dr. Hernandez, for, for working with them. And I want to congratulate Arkansas River Co-op for their success.
Great, thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. And fin-, uh, finally, in terms of reports, we have the summary of licensure exceptions and waivers. And, uh, Ms. Jax is up.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Jax. I'm Coordinator of Educator Licenseur, well, now manager, sorry. And, and I'm here to talk to you today and speak about the licensure exceptions that we have available, um, in, um, our system. So, under code annotated, um, six fifteen one oh four, that allows us to give flexibility to the schools that, so they can use these licensure exceptions when needed and when they cannot find an appropriately licensed person for the position. So, um, this does help us out, and we do see these exa-, uh, exemptions as being, giving us flexibility. The types of licensure exceptions available are now additional licensure plans, long-term subs, effective teacher licensure exceptions, emergency teaching permits, and the Act twelve forty licensure waivers. If you'll see the sheet that I just passed out to you, it compares each one of these licensure exceptions. And it, I do believe it really helps these administrators look at that and plan better when they're, um, hiring for vacancies. Over the last previous four school years, you'll see our ALPs, additional licensure plans, they have dropped at a rate of about one hundred or so per year. Okay? And I, I believe that's probably due to the licensure exceptions that we've made available. In a fall comparison, that's this fall to last fall, you'll see that, uh, last fall, we had twelve hundred and six ALPs approved. And this fall, we have, um, one thousand and thirty ALPs approved. So they have dropped. Special ed continues to be our most frequent additional licensure plan. Um, but it has dropped. Okay? And we have put measures in place so that someone stepping in for the first time under an ALP for special ed or as a long-term sub for special ed would have to complete that seven hours of pre-service professional development before they walk into the classroom. Okay? It's within seven days, actually, of being with children. I got this from my school info, and this is just a map that'll let you see where, um, and this is reported by the schools, where most of the ALPs are occurring. Um, and you can see the top third is the green, and that's mostly in central Arkansas and northwest Arkansas. It's our bigger school districts that, um, logically where the most ALPs are. Okay, long-term subs, that's another type of AL, um, another type of exception that we have. And unfortunately, we have seen that increase over the past few years. Okay? Those are school years fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. We did see an increase in long-term subs and an increase in schools that were having to hire long-term subs, um, from the beginning of the school year. So they started the school year out with a long-term sub. And some of those still remained throughout the entire year.
Can I interrupt you just a second? Do you know when the, the law changed where, in the, in the past, you had to have a teacher of record? And then you could have a long-term sub. And now I notice that we don't have to, or districts don't have to have a teacher of record. Do you have any idea, was it just because people were so desperate and they had to respond?
I think that's exactly the reason, but I don't know exactly about the law change and, and on that. So in the long-term subs by district, you can see that, um, mostly in central Arkansas and in the Jefferson County areas where we've experienced the most long-term subs by district. Those are large districts also. So one of the new licensure exceptions that we have is the effective teacher licensure exception. And if you'll look on your, um, uh, handout that I passed out, there, there have been sixty exceptions this year. And I got this out of my school info, because that is something where they report that. They don't, that's not something that they ask us for. But, um, I can tell you that special ed is not available for this. And it is, um, as I get calls about it and I'm explaining it to people, what I've gotten the most calls about, um, honestly, is, um, ninth grade math and ninth grade science. So those, they're wanting that middle school, highly effective teacher in their content to be able to go up one, just one grade to ninth grade and teach that. And I would say that's probably where the most of these are, because that's what I've gotten the most calls about. The emergency teaching permit, we've approved two hundred and eighty-eight so far this year. And elementary ed seems to be the most requested. That we have the most licensed teachers in elementary ed also. Uh, special ed is not available, um, through the emergency teaching permit also. I would, my conclusion, that's where the long-term subs have gone down, that these emergency teaching permits have helped in that area. And the good thing about the emergency teaching permit is these people are working on licensure. They're working on getting into programs and getting trained. So some schools have chosen not to use the emergency teaching permit, or they just don't know about it enough yet. Um, maybe they want to watch that teacher the first semester, and that teacher wants to decide too, whether they want this to be a permanent, um, position or a long-term position. And then as reported in my school info, uh, the Act twelve forty waivers, you'll see we have four hundred and seventy-eight Act twelve forty waivers reported in forty-six districts this year. Uh, special ed is not available through the Act twelve forty waivers. Uh, and you will see the largest area, as according to my school info, using the Act twelve forty waivers seems to be the Jefferson County area. And that's, the other green dot is probably the Forest City area. Now, I'm going to bring up Ms. Luno, who's going to talk to you about the teacher pipeline and some initiatives that we've, um, put in place at ADE, um, and some good news. Ms. Luno?
Joan Luno, Coordinator of Education here at the department. And hopefully you saw the press release that went out in the last couple of weeks about, um, the green that we made this last year as far as an increase in numbers enrolled in teacher preparation programs. We increased eight percent, and, and that's, that's great. And I want to talk about some reasons why. So Melissa talked about the exceptions, and then I'm going to talk about some things that we're doing to get those teachers that are on exception to licensure. Um, one of the things you see, that drop-off that occurred in thirteen fourteen, that we started slowing down, I've talked about this with this group before. We had a twenty-eleven, uh, licensure task force that got together, restructured teacher licensure. And so it took us time with, with Ed Prep to catch up to those, uh, changes and get programs up and running. The P four to K six was the biggest one, and then changes in special ed. So those programs went online in fifteen, sixteen was really when they, after the approval process, they started enrolling candidates. So just right now, we're starting to see them come out of those new programs. And so that's why I'm hoping that uptick that we're taking is going to continue to go up. We also had some big changes in licensure rules and Ed Prep policies in twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen. Those were really to reduce some of the barriers and make, um, make it more flexible to get into prep programs. One of the biggest changes last year was we removed Praxis Core as a, as a licensure requirement. And, but, we still have Praxis Core because it is a prep requirement for a lot of our programs. Our IHE programs that have to be CAPE accredited, they have to have a nationally scored test for admissions. But now that they don't have to use Praxis Core, a lot of them are using ACT. And the ACT cut score we had set at the department was a little bit higher than what CAPE accepts. And so they have, were able to lower their ACT. We had had a composite set at twenty-four, you know, if they wanted to use ACT in lieu of Praxis Core. With CAPE, they want the, uh, teacher candidates to be at the fiftieth percentile. And right now, that's setting at about a twenty-one point seven. And so a lot of our programs have lowered their admission to a twenty-one on ACT. And so that's going to help a lot. And again, that program change just went into effect last fall. And so we should see some increases in enrollment on that. Um, some other things that we have done are to give focused supports to teachers with exceptions. A lot of the exceptions Melissa talked about, especially our Act twelve forties. We've gone out to these districts that have high numbers, and we really just did advising. What's the best program for them? We provided licensure supports on, um, for assessments. And so I think that's going to start to pay off, too. Uh, changes, we've already talked to you, we are talking about the changes for Apple and the big increase we saw in Apple this last year, and that was because of these changes. Special ed enrollment really has gone up in the last few years, and that is because of the addition of other licensure areas. Prior to twenty fifteen, when, when the new program started, K twelve add-on was the only one available. Now we have first-time licensure for K twelve special ed, both at the undergrad level, which is really taking off. So someone who wants to be a special ed teacher when they start a prep program can go into that first time. Our MAT programs, we've got quite a few of those running now for, uh, not only special ed K twelve, but the birth-to-kay special ed integrated. And those programs are growing, so that's an increase in number. And then we've also added special ed resource as an option. So those are great strides that we've gained in special ed as far as enrollment. Some additional initiatives, and I, I like to highlight these and, and the dates that they started, because we haven't even seen the results of some of the things we started. Our Teach Arkansas campaign that started in February, and a lot we're doing to promote the profession with what, uh, Randy's doing and Megan are doing, a lot of our social media pushes, our Teach Arkansas lecture series, all of that is going to start to pay off as we promote the profession. We're going to roll out the Career Continuum in January, and we'll be back to talk to you about that in January, how that's going to work, and that's another thing to promote the profession. Licenseur assessment supports, we did sixteen of those last summer, where we went out to co-ops. We trained the trainer, uh, as far as how co-op personnel can use our resources to help their candidates trying to pass, uh, licensure assessments. We started that licensure fee reimbursement for teachers adding shortage areas this September. We've already, I think we've reimbursed about fifteen in different areas. It's been mostly library media specialist, and a couple of special eds have come forth. And plus, we're still doing the computer science. Uh, innovative teacher preparation programs, you saw one yesterday with UA Little Rock. Uh, that one's just going to start in the fall. I've got another one I'm going to bring to you in February from another university. Little bit different than that one is, but I think you're going to like it, too. It's going to be a pilot. Um, we've got para-pro to teacher programs that we've started. We've got several universities that do what are called degree completions, where they take, work with a para-pro, maybe has an associate's degree. They get them to a four-year degree, and then we advise them to go into the Apple program or MAT program. Some of those para-pros go directly into an undergraduate, um, four-year degree program for licensure. Um, SAU, UAM are two that are working towards that, Harding, and I could give you the list of the others. But there's a lot of focused supports that go with working with those para-pros as far as advisement, making flexible schedules, going to where they are. And I, it's, it's great to see that our higher ed are, are working with those. And that's a great grow-your-own program. We've also had that expansion with Teacher Cadet and Educators Rising. That's really growing, and we're going to start to see that payoff. If you think about when the numbers for Teacher Cadet grew, those kids should just now be in college and probably starting in a teacher prep program, maybe starting this fall. So we hope to be able to track those numbers. Working a little bit more with teacher residency programs, trying to get true residency programs going. We really just have the one at ESTEM, but that model has been working, and we want to a-advance that program. So Melissa and I are here to answer any questions you have, any comments you want to make.
Great. Any question, any questions or comments on this side?
Just a com-, just a comment, um, for your hard work, because, I mean, it's, you can really see the payoff in, not just yours, but the whole team effort that, that's been going on. And I just congratulate you because you're making a difference for kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Chalmers?
It's just a, it's a good reminder. It takes time for these programs. Uh, and, and being reminded of that and to, and to encourage staying the course and seeing the fruits of your labor pay off in this way, it's very encouraging.
It is, thank you.
Ms. McFetrich?
I just had a comment. I think, uh, the shortage of teachers has been the biggest surprise to me, coming onto this board and to see what you're doing to really combat this issue. It's, it, it looks great. Thank you so much.
Dr. Moore?
I do have some questions, actually, if you don't mind. Um, first, I don't, and maybe this has been a conversation the board's had that I have just missed, but I didn't realize, and this might be a Melissa question, when we're doing the waivers, we don't require an individual to have a bachelor's degree for the Act twelve forty waiver. Is that correct?
Okay. So, um, for the Act twelve forty waivers, if you look into the rules, if it's a core area, it does require a bachelor's degree. area, it does require a bachelor's degree. That's not something that I, I've had a lot of questions about, um, where schools are even considering that, but.
That was a good one, next question, do you think schools are hiring teachers without a bachelor's degree?
That would be, I'm not widespread, I don't think so.
Okay. Has the board ever asked us?
It's in the technical areas where that's more frequent.
And I don't think it's widespread in that necessarily.
Yeah, so, you know, in a welding, you know, master welder that gets
Sure.
um twelve forty waiver to teach welding, so usually uh the bulk of it's in those types of fields.
But in the, in the four core, it is required still?
Well, yeah, and, and that's what a lot of schools don't, don't realize, um, but we're trying to make that um really available, that it's not just four core areas. So the core areas are elementary ed, um, then your math, science, language arts, and social studies for middle school and high school. And the one that a lot of people don't realize is music, art, and your K-12 foreign languages are also core areas.
Great, that makes me feel better.
Did I forget any?
It's a different definition of core than core courses that we think of when students are taking.
Yes.
So that's, that's the difference.
That is helpful. A couple of other questions along those lines, and I know, I think I've heard these conversations, but I don't know the answer, so I wanna ask, are all of these teachers, do they still fall under PLSB? Or how does that work?
Um, ethics, yes. Um, long-term subs, um, I don't believe they would, but they do have to have background checks.
Okay. And this might be a commissioner question too, so therefore, but they do all have contracts with the district, so no matter what kinda license you have, you still fall under teacher fair dismissal?
No, you do not.
No, teacher fair dismissal is certified, applies to certified personnel.
So if you have any of these type of license, you're not certified, so you have a different contract?
Well, the emergency teaching permit's not a license.
Right.
Yeah, so they're not licenses, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Twelve forty would, right? Unless it was waived?
I don't know, that's, that's what happens when Ivy leaves, you know, we just don't get all these, uh, these answers.
It probably depends on what they asked for in their Act twelve forty waiver when they came before.
Well, that's, that's true too.
Yeah, Alexandra might be able to help us with that, but.
Okay, sorry.
We'd get, we'd get you the answers.
Good questions.
Anything else, Dr. Moore?
No, thank you.
Ms. O, anything?
Good.
Great. One, um, and I may have just missed this, on this, on the really significant increase in special ed enrollment, what, I mean, which of these pieces of this multifaceted effort do you think is really working with that population?
I think that uh one thing when we changed, and that's been a long-term change, when we, special ed used to be an endorsement to a standard teaching license. And so over the years, I heard so many people call that didn't have a teaching license and they said, I wanna be a special ed teacher, or I'm a para-pro and I've worked in a special ed classroom and they wanna be a special ed. That's a long route to have, when you know that is your goal. So those universities creating those first-time licensure programs for special ed, I think that had a big impact. Um, I think that our um Master of Arts in Teaching will, um, it, it is growing every year. Um, and, and they don't just go straight into the classroom without any coursework in those Master of Arts in Teaching for special ed programs. They have to have passed their test, they have to have had at least six hours coursework before they can take that position in the classroom. Um, but I think both of those things are helping on the forefront for special ed. Joan, can you think of anything else?
In the beginning days of special education, uh, the sixties, seventies, eighties, you could get a bachelor's degree in special ed. And, and it was more of a, across that, we were trained in all areas of meeting needs of all handicaps. Then it got specialized where you majored in learning disabilities, you majored in cognitive disabilities or deaf ed. And then the colleges, I'm not sure of their reasoning, decided you gotta get a bachelor's and then focus. Uh, not sure that was a good idea. Apparently, they rethought it too, not they, but the higher ed. And uh, so, so that's, it's, it, it came full circle.
And, and Joan reminded me that, that was actually the licensure task for, force that um started this.
Recommended that change, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Thanks to you.
Just to, to remind too, that, you know, the, on the, not the licensure side, but the learning services side of our house, uh, and the special ed unit, you know, they did a lot of work over the last couple of years on paperwork reduction, streamlining processes and different things. So, you know, well, that didn't have an immediate, all those worked together, you know, the, the things that were deterring people from getting into special ed as we try to remove those barriers on that side, then I think that helps. It may not directly encourage them to get into it, but it doesn't discourage them as much as maybe it had in the past. So I, I think uh just, or uh, agency-wide, there have been a lot of efforts that we're seeing positive, uh, you know, movement now in the numbers.
And through their leadership, I do think some of the schools are doing some um innovative things where they're providing more prep time and for those teachers and um getting a, a para-pros in those classrooms, you know, and making sure that um they have more help.
Great. Thank y'all, both, so much. All right, um, we have a, an omission on the agenda, so we're gonna need to add a, have a motion to add, uh, the chair's report, the commissioner's report, and the committee and uh task force and liaison reports. Uh, so I would ask for a motion.
I remember that we amended agenda to include those items.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Dr. Hill. All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, okay. Um, oops, what was that? Oh, um, chair's report, um, the thing, main thing that I have is looking ahead to the March meeting. And uh Ms. Wendell uh has done a, uh, done a lot of work trying to get our, our road show um together for us. Uh, we are um looking at the March fourteenth and fifteenth meeting, so that would be um our normal meetings in March. Uh, there, that's Thursday and Friday. Uh, the game plan is that we would be in Northwest Arkansas. Um, on Thursday, we would be at a, a, a facility that would allow streaming. Um, we are still looking for a facility that would allow streaming. If Ms. Chambers or Ms. McFetrich have ideas of places that would allow streaming, an audience, those kinds of things, something tells me we got, we got options.
Yeah, that's an easy hand.
All right. So talk, please talk to Ms. Wendell, 'cause she's trying to figure out exactly where. We knew there would be facilities, but, um, but, you know, hadn't located them yet. Then on Friday, we'll, we will stay in Northwest Arkansas, we'll have all day. Um, we will, we're gonna look at uh two school districts uh in the morning. Uh, the plan is to go to P Ridge. P Ridge is um a forward community, uh, so it, we thought it made sense uh in that respect. There's a, a good deal of innovation going on there. It's also a, a very high-performing uh district. Um, the afternoon, uh, we're gonna be nearby at the Decatur School District, a, a district that is having more challenges uh despite uh being quite close. And we thought that would be a way to see two districts, um, that, um, both in Northwest Arkansas, outside of the larger districts that are normally talked about in Northwest Arkansas. Um, and so that's the game plan for March. So, um, uh, we will start the, the Thursday meeting at ten. Uh, so those of you who get, who typically drive on Thursday morning, you get to sleep in. Um, the rest of us get to drive up. Our hotel rooms will be available on Wednesday night if folks need to, to, to go up uh earlier. Uh, and then on uh Thursday night, of course, we'll have, uh, the, the rest of us will have hotel rooms uh in Northwest Arkansas. And then um, uh, we'll be able to come back uh on Friday afternoon uh and get back home that evening. Is that all, does that game plan sound all right to folks? Okay, so thanks to Ms. Wendell for uh the legwork put in on that. Um, that's really my only report. Does anybody else have any uh reports of events this last month? We'll obviously do uh task forces liaisons in a minute. Anything else? Okay.
Have we, have we talked about, uh, Arkansas has another Milken uh award winner? There's only forty announced in the United States this year. And um, uh, Ms. Newton and I were uh able to go down there. Senator uh Bowman was there, uh, the commissioner, several former Milken winners, and then of course the team here that puts all that together. We don't mind forgetting anybody.
No, she, she was outstanding.
Yes.
She, the words that she said, she, she gave the heart of every teacher that, 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 I mean, she, she gave her heart and, and.
Totally surprised.
Yeah.
Unlike the teacher of the year, they don't even know they're being considered. And uh, uh, and they get twenty-five thousand dollars. And she was, she thought we were all there because it was a blue ribbon school and we're gonna celebrate it. And so they were able to surprise her because, you know, it's hard and, like we were saying this morning, in a little school, when you have one room and everybody's in there. But, uh, and the Milken lady was, uh, represented uh there and she, you know, did a really good job. And of course, the commissioner's always uh good and engaged with the children and it was, it was a terrific morning in Kingsland, Arkansas.
Yes.
Great. Thanks, thanks for that, Ms. O. Um, okay, commissioner?
Yes, sir. The uh commissioner's report this month, a couple of things that I wanna talk about. Uh, one that brings together many of the things that we, uh, we've discussed today already. But earlier this week, I had the opportunity to go to Southside in Independence County. Uh, they had their future stories day. Uh, it's a program that they started, really it falls very much in line with, uh, with our student success plans that we've established in Act nine thirty. Uh, but each of their students are required to write their future story. But it's something that they come back to on a regular basis and, and revise. Uh, so, but this day, they had, the seniors were having interviews. So the kids that were Ja, in the JAG program, they had to do five interviews. Uh, the other seniors did three. But they had all, uh, community members, they had folks from medical, uh, community, eh, education community, some of our partners, uh, Mike Mertens was there, Gerald Cooper, uh, Mark Gibson from the co-op uh up there. And uh, and then the hospital, local clinics, law enforcement. So they had several, the local law enforcement agencies, state police, game and fish, uh, local prosecutor's office. Um, but, you know, and some of these kids actually do get employment from it. It's not just a mock exercise. Uh, they, they've actually had, uh, NavHolds has hired young people uh through this, this effort. Uh, so, and then I, they invited me to kinda tell my story and, you know, how does someone from Garden, Arkansas that goes chemical engineering become the commissioner of education? It, you know, the, the point was, um, always be prepared 'cause you don't know how your story will change. Uh, so it was a, a great event, uh, but just to, the, the, the community engagement in that district is amazing. It really is. And again, a, a small community, growing community, um, but they, they do a really good job of providing those out of the classroom opportunities for their kids. Uh, the other thing I wanna make you aware of, and you've heard us talking about this, uh, when we refer to HRS, uh, again, one of those acronyms, but high reliability schools. Uh, since we submitted, we're, have been preparing our S R report, we submitted it, we got approval, and we started changing uh the way we seek to support schools and become more of, of a go-to for support rather than a compliance-driven uh agency. Looking to see, when you think about level one support or level two support, um, up to, through the level five, what does that mean? You know, how does that change how we operate? Well, how does that change the relationship? Because really, it's about that relationship between the department and the schools. How do we make sure that it's not just focused on those that have been identified as uh schools in need of comprehensive support or, or schools in need of targeted support? And we looked at several uh concepts out there, uh, but we, we landed on the high reliability schools model as a way that we can, because it, it covers so many areas that are uh critical right now in the conversation. So, uh, how, high reliability schools i- has been developed by Dr. Robert Marzano, uh, who has, you know, gone all the way back to the original, some of the original research on effective schools. Brought it into something that every school can use, every school can communicate. And we talk about communication, it's in very simple terms. Uh, one is, level one, do you have a safe and collaborative culture? And so we're really going to be starting in January of a, um, kind of a statewide professional development effort. Uh, where books will be mailed to principals, it's gonna be a, a kind of a statewide book study. We're gonna be uh leading those who are willing. Uh, we're not making people do this, but it's something that we're encouraging. And uh, we're gonna have a launch in January with commissioner's memo and a webinar that really kicks this off and a, a social media push of, you know, our own one-state-one-book effort, uh, but targeted to our school leaders. And so we, we will make sure that you are aware of the timelines and if you want to engage in some of this, we would invite you to, to do that as well. We'll have Twitter chats, we're gonna have Dr. Marzano himself, uh, who is, is very excited about the work here in Arkansas. And here's something that's very important, 'cause we will, I'm sure we will get, as we did with the, you know, the PLC pilot, uh, and some other initiatives, where folks will say, well, if this is good, you should make people do this. You should require it. Well, here's the challenge. One is when you're, you know, think about, when you're told you have to do something, if your doctor tells you, you have to stop eating chocolate pie.
I want it worse.
You want it worse. That's right. You wanna push back. That's na, that's human nature. Uh, well, here's the other thing. If we as a state say, this is a statewide initiative and you're required to do this, guess what? They lose flexibility of federal funding under supplement, not supply. We don't want that. We, we want our schools to be able to have, use that flexibility. We're, we're gonna lead the effort, but we're not gonna say you have to do this. Because some districts have other things that work for them and, and we don't want them to change that. Other districts have thing, you know, have needs that they haven't figured out how to meet yet. We think that uh high reliable, high reliability schools can cover all of those bases, even the, uh, some of the work with the governor's safety, school safety commission. Uh, so, uh, that, that's going to be a big push for us in twenty nineteen. And then in June, at the ADE summit, uh, there'll be kind of a, a culmination of a lot of this work with Dr. Phil Warwick, who is the, uh, one of the experts in this field of high reliable, high reliability schools, who has been working with the team at Hall High School uh and with several of our co-ops around the state. But we'll have him come in and we'll keep you apprised of those dates. Also, uh, we, we have a new video for this month that I'll, will get queued up, Dan. And while he's queuing that up, uh, we, uh, some of you know Mark Hudson, some, some of you may not, but Mark Hudson was the longtime staffer uh for the education committee uh over at the legislature. And when we heard of his retirement, we all wondered, wow, who are they going to get to be as effective as he was? Well, they found someone and they found her over here at the department. Uh, Michelle Griffin has been invited to join the team there and, and had January second. So this is the last meeting that I'll have with you all to really talk about that. I was gonna ask her to come down here and uh let us recognize her, but she's at a training, so getting ready for her, her new position. But she will be great in helping support the legislative committees and, uh, but she will be missed, but uh just wanted to let y'all know that, that change, significant change. Yes, we, we will. So, Ms. O asked if we would fill that position. Yes, we will have to. Uh, all right, this is the third in our series of our inspire and impact videos. And, uh, Dan, we'll go ahead and get it started.
What can you do with a teaching license besides be a classroom teacher? Turns out, a teaching license can serve as a gateway to other careers in education. Just ask Kevin Beaumont. His career in education started in a classroom, but now as coordinator of professional development at ADE, he is helping to shape the future of the agency.
Uh, in college, I was uh studying to be a medical doctor. Uh, and I was asked in my junior year to become a teaching assistant for a biology lab class. Um, and I just remember- And I just remember that experience just really turned me on to just, you know, working with other students and that learning process. You know, I taught for around, I think, eight years, and then at some point, an administrative position came open in our school. And so, I was asked to fulfill that role. I started here in the agency as a science specialist, program advisor in the Curriculum and Assessment Unit. Worked there for two years, and then a position opened up in our Professional Development Unit. And so, I was the Director of Professional Development for the state for four years, working with our cooperatives and our STEM centers, developing and providing professional development to our teachers across the state. And then just recently began a position in assistance with the HR office in onboarding new employees to the agency, improving the culture across the agency, and also providing professional development to our current staff. As we move towards student-focused learning, that's a huge change. And so, that dream, that vision is sometimes so grandiose thinking, but I really think we're making strides in getting there. That's such a drastic change from the way that I taught in the classroom, the way that I was taught from my teachers. I think for all of us educators, it's just so much different than what we experience. It's difficult to see that in our future, but I think we're making strides in getting there. And I think our vision, mission for the agency in supporting schools and getting there, I think we're going to get there soon. But I've had so much fun here at the agency. I love coming to work. There are pieces of being in a government agency that are frustrating at times, but overall, the people here that I've worked with have just been wonderful. I've worked with some great teams, I've had some great leaders, and yeah, it's just been a great experience from start, day one. I've really enjoyed myself.
So, again, thank our Strategic Communications Team for putting that together and the continued effort to tell the stories of educators in the state and the different roles that they can, that they can play. Finally, Dr. Bailey, you want to come on up for a second for me?
Yay.
So, when Dr. O decided he wanted to take on the challenge of Pine Bluff, we knew we had a challenge to fill a very important and critical need, and we have identified someone we think, we know will do a great job for us, Dr. Suzanne Bailey. She comes to us for, most recently, from ASU BB, but prior to that, she has been Superintendent at Lone Oak, Superintendent at Waldron, I think it was.
Waldron and Maynard.
And Maynard, that was, okay. So, she has seen, she understands those small districts, she understands the challenges of meeting the needs of having effective teachers in those classrooms, and she is going to lead this Educator Effectiveness and Literacy Unit very well, and would ask y'all to help us welcome her. This is her second week now, second week with us. So, welcome, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Say something if you want to.
I just appreciate the opportunity to work here. I've always wanted to be here, and so, I've enjoyed it so far and got a lot to do. So, we're getting started. So, but thanks for having me. We'll work very hard.
Thank you. Thanks to you. We will look forward to working with you.
All right, look forward to it.
Great.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. That's all. All right. So, reports from liaisons and task forces, I'll wait till Ms. Dean is back. Start with, these are, I kind of started writing a list before we got the list. I'll just start with S.A. Anything else?
Under the SAS, last month, we talked about the amendment that was going to be asked for. It's been, through a Commissioner's memo, feedback has been put out and requested through January 4th. And so, if you're interested, the Commissioner's memo is 19-062. And we talked about that it was just in the long-term reporting was where the changes were going to be made for that amendment. As a steering committee, we'll meet again next month into January. And then I was able to sit in a REL or a Regional Education Lab meeting here at the department, I think it was last week. What they, it's a research group, and what they're looking at is, do our indicators, how well do they predict post-secondary success? What, where students are going, whether it's career or college? What are our indicators telling us, and what is the power of each indicator? And the progress that's been made, that group has made a formal data request from the various agencies that it's going to take, and the results of that research should be back in about 18 months. And it should be, I think, some very, very valuable and useful information.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Newton? Commissioner has an amendment to his report, I believe.
Well, just amendment and something that you all may be able to help us with. Just recently, like within the last few days, the U.S. Department of Education had issued an update concerning teach grants. I don't know if you're familiar with the teach grants, but it was a federal program that would forgive student loans, but there were bureaucratic hiccups and red tape hiccups that some teachers found, like several thousand teachers found themselves, if they didn't meet the exact letter of the requirements, or if they missed deadlines by a day or something, then those grants automatically switched over to federal unsubsidized loans. So, I mean, Congress has been involved, but the U.S. Department of Education has issued an announcement that they are going to go back and allow teachers to seek reconsideration. So, I've asked Dr. Bailey this morning to get information on how to appoint someone who would be the point person. So, as Arkansas teachers, we need to get the word out to them, because I don't know that, the feds always get the word out very effectively. So, we need to get the word out. Would ask your help in that, especially you, Randy, if, as you're out and about, because you will have more interaction with teachers maybe than the rest of us over the next few months. But if y'all could send anyone that has questions about that to us, we are going to do our best to help facilitate and assist them with getting the right information from the feds and getting their reconsiderations done. Because this could be huge for folks.
Is that some kind of paperwork that you could send us that I could get out?
We'll send a link. I have a link to the teach grant webpage that we'll send, and what you'll see is, they'll, they have an announcement that says, "We're working on this and we'll send you more information when we get it." At least you'll have the information, and their plan is to update their page by January 31st with the process that they'll use. But it is good news that at least they have looked at it and reconsidered the nightmare that has been created for a number of these. The problem is, some of the teachers, I understand some of these teachers may have exited the profession already. So, there may be some other difficulties, but if we can find those in Arkansas that this would apply to, we want to find them and we want to give them the help. We'll make sure we get y'all the link. I apologize for forgetting that, having to come back.
That's fine. Ms. Newton, anything on NASB?
The GIC committee met on Monday afternoon. I think most of you have been listening to the news and know that the appropriations by the next couple of weeks could get interesting. But one thing that they pointed out to us is that the Education Department was already funded earlier in the year, so that wouldn't affect the Education Department. There are no hearings scheduled between now and end of the year in the Education Committees, either in the Senate or the House of Representatives, but the major issues that they're looking at that would probably come up in 2019, reauthorization of the Higher Education Act. Also, they're going to be conducting hearings on proposed changes to Title IX, and there is a rule that's open for public comment on Title IX rules until January 28th. The E-rate is probably going to, there are probably going to be hearings on that in the coming year. Also, data privacy is probably going to be a big issue, maybe broadening the oversight of data privacy to include nonprofits and other organizations. So, that's going to also be a big issue. And then on December 6th, Department of Agriculture issued a final rule addressing National School Lunch Program and Breakfast Program to roll back standards set under the previous administration that impacted sodium, flavored milk, and whole grant requirements. And that update will take effect on July of the next year.
And I think the Legislative Conference is April 7th through 9th in DC. Available to go. I'm planning on going. It'll be my last NASB hurrah. And I really would urge folks if they can go. The Legends Conference is particularly, I think, valuable because it provides an opportunity for members of the State Board to interact with our congressional delegation, and especially folks from different parts of the state are there. That personal connection to members of Congress, very, very helpful on working on these issues that Ms. Newton just mentioned. Okay? All right. Ms. Hook, on Special Education, anything?
Okay. The Office of Special Education, a lot of what they've been doing this past time has to do with licensing and training and working with the visually impaired. And they're partnering with the ADE's Teacher Recruitment and Retention Program by attending those, becoming an Arkansas teacher, and you know, so they get the special ed word out. They'll now work with two out-of-state institutions of higher education to recruit and support licensed Arkansas teachers seeking to add the visual impaired specialty certification. And that way, you know, there are a lot of children that come to school and they are intellectually capable, but they do need somebody that understands, you know, accommodations they would need because of their visually impaired Arkansas. Transition Services hosted the 2018 Transition Summit, and 47 teams participated in that summit. And then on later in the fall, the, this is especially interesting, is that the Arkansas Transition Services and the Arkansas Rehabilitation Services hosted a film premiere. And from the 2018 Inclusion Films and Film Camp, and 50 students with disabilities participated in this camp during which they wrote, filmed, and produced short films. And Joey Travolta participated in the premiere and was one of the keynote speakers at the Transition Summit. So, you know, that was giving students an opportunity that other people might overlook them, but then they in fact, you know, have the creative and they can learn the skills that are necessary. So, Special Ed Department is busy and obviously providing support when and where necessary.
And then, you want to pick up with public school accountability? Anything there?
Yes, let me get to that email. Okay. The new standards of accreditation online tool is working to highlight the intention of the new standards for accreditation rules. The ADE and districts are working through some exceptions with background checks and the AP training certification, but expect to have long-term solutions soon. As the transition of waivers for open enrollment and district conversions, 1240s and schools of innovation are completed, more exceptions showing up in the overall tool, and so, they're going to get that ready as a resource. The schools have completed review of the 2018 graduation rates, and so, the School Performance Unit is finalizing that review. And then the state and federal monitoring teams are completing desk monitoring and risk assessment, and the teams have started on site monitoring. So, that's, don't have to worry about everybody being busy.
All right. Great. On the Forward front, Ms. Hook and I will be visiting with the Forward folks this next Tuesday. Notice has gone out on that meeting. Forward is focused, of course, as, on the legislative session and the initiatives that are the focus there. Another area where Forward is putting increasing energy is in the area of arts education. And I know Ms. Chambers has been in some communications with them, and I don't know if you want to kind of tee up that.
Sure. Kind of maybe a brief update on an update. So, I think you'll recall, a few months ago, I gave a brief update on conversations that were occurring about ensuring that there was availability or access to arts education, maybe particularly for populations, communities that didn't have access to arts education, and how might we go about that? And that was very interesting, but what it really led to was a different focus on arts integration. And Ms. House, it's very similar to the point you made earlier about ag and art. There are conversations, there's work going on right now that look at art and arts-infused That's interesting because we all learn differently. So, in some regards, it's how you infuse art into very different programs than you might have thought of normally. But the example that was given was a biology class where instead of just studying a picture of a heart and the chambers of a heart in a book, you sculpt a heart. And they were talking about students that actually had gone through a biology program. I think this one in particular actually went on to med school. It changed, so not only is that a great consideration for students that maybe learn differently, it changes, I think, everyone's experience with the subject matter. And so, Full Brank College at U of A, ADE, and Forward are working very collaboratively to figure out how we might go about introducing some of these ideas and concepts into our program here in Arkansas, which I'm very excited about. So, things underway. It's not, I'm hopeful that in the next month or two, and maybe it'll be an opportunity for Ms. Hook, but that there'll be an opportunity to bring an update from that work to this group, because I think it's exciting.
Cool. Great. And you have anything on Human Resources?
No.
Okay. Okay. And then, on the task force front, we, obviously, anything in addition to family community engagement from the, we had a great work session this morning, so.
They did an excellent job. Just want to thank the whole team. Also, want to thank Gina. Jenny Dickey was there this morning as well. Want to thank her as well. She's been an integral part from jump. Just proud of the work that they're doing and look forward to bringing that finished framework for students, not students, but for all stakeholders to take advantage of. We were talking on the way in here, and I was saying, you know, the frameworks is giving each community, each school district, each building, whatever, an opportunity to have a frame, just like a frame of a house, but it will be customized to that particular school, that particular district. They can build onto that frame like any house you would have. You have different houses for different areas of the state that are customized for what your environment is. In the South, in Louisiana, also, those houses are on stilts. You go into Africa Savannah, they're made from the environment that they live in. So, that's what we want. We want to be able to provide them with a framework and let them utilize the tools that will give them, the tools that they have in their community to build something that is customized and fits their needs. So, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any new business to come before us? We do have one request for public comment, and wanted, of course, we need a motion. This was not submitted in advance, so if there is a motion up for public comment for three minutes.
A motion.
I move to accept public comment.
Right. Motion by Ms. Zook, second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Jenny Blankenship, you have three minutes. Thanks for being here.
Try to be quick. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a big-picture question that I would like the state to consider, and I need to address this with the House and Senate Education Committee as well, since it was their idea. And that's just related to this whole waiver process. Waivers under Act 1240, and then some under 930, and then to charter schools in general, since every state, every district in the state, as you know, may now apply for a waiver for almost everything that's not expressly forbidden by federal law. And my concerns are not really specific to any school district or individual decision that you have made on that. It's just about the process in general. It seems increasingly unclear what the rationale is for decision-making, and what's working, what's not working, how do we fairly apply it across schools? How do you compare the results across schools? What laws may simply need to be repealed if they don't make sense anymore, so the waiver may not be necessary? And at the same time, it's unclear what standards should be non-negotiable, since if a body of research shows that those standards are critical for the success and well-being of students. So, otherwise, you know, why do we have standards at all? And I started a research project on this earlier this year with one of our research fellows, and it was just so hard to untangle what it is that we've been doing with all of these waivers, and what seems to be successful and what's not. And another thing that really concerns me most is that most parents have no idea what waivers their children's schools have, and have any kind of voice in that process. So, I think we need to do a better job of communicating that to parents. And, you know, I started thinking about, you know, big picture, what do we wanna be as a state? What direction are we going in? And I looked back at your vision for excellence in education, and you have some really good guiding principles there. Striving to be a model of excellence that is dedicated to professional and ethical standards, the whole child, and effective results. Driving action toward excellence through informed risk-taking, protecting the public trust by ensuring quality and accountability, and several other points about transparency. And those are great guiding principles, but I just fear that we're kinda getting away from that, and, you know, part of it, I know that you did not approve any of these laws, you're just, you know, you're dealing with what you've got, but you have a huge role to play, obviously, and I've just noticed that all of these waivers are taking so much of your time in these board meetings. I'll wrap it up real quick. Would you consider creating some sort of task force, panel, committee, whatever, to study some of these waivers? What's good, what's bad? What do we need to know more about? And what are some guiding principles going forward? And if so, could that involve like a parent, a teacher, an administrator, a student, a legislator, so that we can work together and figure out what's going on with all of this? And, yeah, so, I just wanted to put that out there for you to think about, and thank you very much. I appreciate your service.
Great. Thank you. All right. Ms. Chambers?
Hi. I was just commenting, it sounded very much like what we were talking about this morning in our work session, and I really like the collaborative approach that you're talking about taking or asking us to consider.
All right. If there is nothing else to come before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Ms. Zook? Motion by Ms. Zook?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor say aye. All right. So, we will head to a follow-up work session before lunch. So, five, 10 minutes.